Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on initial development plans, alternative plans, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezone or a major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for a final action at the first council meeting of the next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here at the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda, and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms to the Shape Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. By approving the consent agenda, the Commission is approving the items on consent. Therefore, upon approval of the agenda, those members of the public in attendance for those items are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting, planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or a representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. The Planning Commission will discuss the matter and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on CityLink and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. Good evening, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to order. I'd like to make a couple reminders on a couple items. Out of courtesy for everyone, please silence all your electronic devices. We look forward to hearing your testimony tonight, and appreciate you joining us. In effort to have enough time to hear from the audience members, we ask that you, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to five minutes to allow us to hear from everyone that would like to speak. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. Denise, please read the items on the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one is approval of minutes. One A is Planning Commission briefing of Tuesday, September 3, 2019. Item one B is Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, September 4, 2019. Item two A is petition 11059, 2019, rezoned from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District located at 214 West Russell Street. Item three is consent agenda approval.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address any of those items? Anyone from the commissioners?
Moved to approve.
Second?
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, now we'll move on to the regular agenda. I will need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second?
I have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Um, I am, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to amend the regular agenda to move 5i to immediately follow 5a.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, so we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, then we'll vote on the amended regular agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move on to the first item on the regular agenda. Denise?
Item 5A, petition 10951, 2019, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and the O Office Districts to the CN Conservation RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, and the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban Districts located at 34th Street and Career Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I will be recusing myself from this item as well as 5a, or 5i.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Adam Roach, Planning and Development Services. The purpose of 5A is to construct a residential and office development located on the northwest corner of North Career and West 34th Street North. The applicant is Mike Crane, representing Grasslands LLC. The applicant is proposing to rezone 23.5 acres, which includes RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and the O Office Districts to the CN Conservation RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, and O Office Districts to construct a future residential and office development. Public agencies and infrastructure comments. There was a concern with drainage at the last meeting that we were here, and the applicant did host a meeting last week with residents. I think we had about 13 residents in attendance. Some comments that we received from our internal counterparts. Stormwater detention is required in conformance with engineering design standards. Commercial development shall discharge runoff to not exceed single-family runoff rates. Placement of fill in the floodplain shall demonstrate a no-rise analysis to obtain a floodplain development permit. Land use and comprehensive plan analysis. The proposed residential and office zoning meets the intent of the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. There are minor conflicts with uses that can be addressed through existing minimum standards and setbacks, buffer yards, drainage, and other city standards. The proposal does not increase the existing office zoning district and provides additional area for conservation to accommodate some of the regulated floodplain located within this area. The city's recommendation, because the subject application is in spirit of the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, the applicant, staff recommends approval of the rezoning. In addition to some of the drainage concerns, we have Andy Berg here from Stormwater Management to address concerns that the neighbors have stemming from previous discussions and the neighborhood meeting last week. So with that, any questions that you may have?
Questions for Adam? Okay. You want to come up and speak now, or?
Andy? Yeah.
Andy Berg, Public Works. After the meeting last week, or two weeks ago, I'm not sure, Adam and I met, and we discussed some of the concerns the neighborhood had. The development, proposed development, is going to be meeting design standards, as he mentioned. We have very detailed design standards regarding detention needs, so that the runoff coming off of the site is not exceeding a single-family runoff rate. That's our design standard, and that goes up to a 100-year design event. The style of pond that they put in there is up to the developer, as long as it meets our standards. It will, all ponds will overtop at a certain elevation, but it is designed to function up to a 100-year storm elevation. That's our standard. The floodplain zoning, there, as Adam also mentioned, they're required to show no rise for any fill they would put into that existing floodplain. The drainage way adjacent is maintained by the city of Sioux Falls. The property is managed like a majority of our properties in town. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, it's been pretty wet in there. I've had discussions with multiple residents asking for it to be mowed or hayed, as we've done in the past. That is something we very recently just got accomplished out in this area, as it finally did dry out enough. Unfortunately, now it is wet again. It's just a very large wet area. However, conveyance through the area does function. I'm not aware of any homes or private structures that have been impacted by any sort of floodwaters in that area. When the development to the west was brought in and developed, you know, they were raised in that floodplain, taken out of there with some FEMA documents, LOMER, I think they call it. So things appear to be functioning properly. There's always maintenance that we deal with on our properties, so, you know, we check this property just like we do any other. Mowing has probably been the primary one that we've dealt with lately, and the related wild animal type coyote things that we've dealt with in this area. I am constantly working with animal control on that side of it, and as I said, it finally did just get hayed before this last bit of rain, so that's been one of the more frequent discussions I've had with the neighbors in recent times, so.
Thanks, Andy. Any questions for Andy?
Mr. Chair? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I just, Andy, I wanted to just make sure you do have a management plan in place for the city-owned properties, correct?
Yes, the, the, the regular maintenance on city properties is generally, we don't mow them. We mow a 12-foot buffer around the outside for our maintenance activities. However, larger properties such as this will do a no-cost lease with a rancher in the area, and they'll hay the property in exchange for doing we control on those properties. As far as any large mucking excavation operations, those are basically prioritized each year based on the need of the properties. We do that work every winter. This property has not gotten to the level where it has any sort of public danger, flooding of private structures, that type of thing. We, we evaluate them all each year as we're doing our maintenance activities, but that, this one is not to the level where it would require the heavy equipment.
And obviously, if residents have questions or concerns, they can call you anytime and just express those, correct?
Certainly, yes.
And bring that to your attention if there is something that they would like addressed.
Correct, yes. I'm the, I'm the point of contact for maintenance requests in the drainage properties.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you talked about no-rise standard. Could you just go into just a tiny bit of detail with that? I assume that's a matter of exchanging cut for fill or things like that, but could you describe that a little bit?
Albert's more of the expert on this, but I should be able to answer that. Yes, it is a balance. They have to prepare hydraulic modeling of the area as it is now, and then as it will be when it's filled, with the removal of those areas as conveyance, because it won't be if they're filled, and they either have to accommodate that in another location, so it offsets it, like you said, a cut one area, a fill another, that type of thing. They need their modeling to show that there's no change in the water surface elevation with any fill they may place in that floodplain.
So, in essence, it is either as good or better than it is today if it meets that standard, correct?
As far as the floodway and floodplain, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Andy. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to, or actually, is the petitioner?
Yep.
Here. Come up and state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Mike Crane. I'm with the Lloyd Companies. Address is 2212 East 54th. There's not a lot more that I would add to the staff report, other than to comment that from the last time that you saw this, when we brought this to you in October, we were proposing about one acre of conservation land, and as a result of conversations with the city, working, talking, and listening to the neighborhood, you'll, you'll note that we have almost six acres of conservation, and out of about 25% of the total, total site will be conservation. And I think that, that at the neighborhood meeting, as was reported, there were about 12, 12, 13 people there from the neighborhood. Most of the discussion focused on drainage. There were a couple of comments about the office use, but other than that, there was nothing, nothing of real, real significance. And I think that's it. I do have, my engineer is here tonight if you have technical questions, and we'd be happy to answer them if you'd like.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item?
Is it possible to make it so that the pictures could be shown?
Jason can help you with that.
Okay. I'm Robert Deliante, 3104, 3104 North Galaxy Lane. And again, last time I spoke about the water issues and everything. Okay, maybe do it this way. Yep. So if you take a look at some of these photos here, which I find very interesting, when they say that there doesn't seem to be a problem, this is from back in March, okay? And as you can tell, there is definitely a lot of water back there. Now, bear with me a second here as I go to the next picture. This is another picture, and you can see the existing apartment complex that's there. The apartment complex that they're talking about putting in is going to be just to the south of the existing one. If you notice, the water goes all the way back to where they're proposing to put this, okay? Moving on further, this is also a picture, you can see the existing complex in the back. Wish I could bring it over a little more here. I don't know if that's going to help, okay? And you can see the existing complex in the back. Again, you can see the water right up to it. This is a picture looking to the north, towards the cul-de-sac. This is something that we're concerned about, because if you can see here, too, water is right up to people's yards. This is behind my mom's house, and the water is right up to the fence of the neighbor there. And again, this is almost directly east, or excuse me, west of where the apartment complex is supposed to be. This shows the whole area looking southward. As you can tell, that's a lot of water. That's more like a lake. Okay, same thing here, and so on. Here's another shot where you can clearly see those apartments in the back, and again, they are supposed to be building the apartment complex to the south of that. As you can tell, it's water. This is one of the culverts that some of the neighbors are concerned about, because it flows back behind, and you can see how close it is to, actually, coming up to people's property. And here's another one from my house looking to the south, and all the water. Now, another one. This is the FEMA flood map that was put out in 2009. This flood map, where it shows the 100-year flood, the pictures I just showed you all show water all the way up to the 100-year flood. If you notice, the area where they're proposing to put this is predominantly in the 100-year flood. Any extra runoff, because obviously the city hasn't done their job, is going to create even more problems for us. We're already at the 100-year flood level. And here's a picture from September 12, just last month, after we had 1.1 inches of rain. You see how the water has come up. Here's another picture from behind my house. I believe this was taken the next day, September 12, okay? That's 2.7 inches of water over a three-day period. Look at how much water is there. This is on, it was the day right after the tornado went through. You can see the water there. The next day, that's how much water was there. And again, that's 2.7 inches of rain over a three-day period. If we were to get, shall we say, the seven, eight inches of rain that neighboring areas got, we'd be underwater. And that's as it exists now. This is why we're all so concerned about it. I've talked to FEMA about it. FEMA was very interested in it, because they said, "The appropriate studies haven't been done." And they also said the city of Sioux Falls has a very bad track record when it comes to that. FEMA is actually very concerned. They also said that they are going to be out within the next year or two to reassess that area, because they realize there's a problem. And part of the problem is all the apartments that have been built on the north side of Career, that all drain to Career. The existing apartment complex, you can see in those pictures up there, actually, that the existing complex has a retention pond next to it. That overflows. When it overflows, it floods everything down below. That's why we have the problem. Putting a retention pond in, given what we have currently there, tells me it isn't going to work. Because if you went up, like when those pictures were taken in September, up by Benson, there was hardly any water. The water didn't start until after the retention pond. That was overflowing because of all the water that's coming off of Career. You've got countless apartment complexes up there. They're all cement. No place for the water to go, so it flows in there. Even the existing apartment complex had water in the parking lot three days later. Like I said, I, I hear what the city says. I lived there. The pictures don't lie. If you can have that much water and 2.7 inches of water does that over a three-day period, Lord help us, if it were to rain, you know, like I said, like what we seem to be moving into. Even the mayor has turned around and had something on TV the other night about the concerns about flooding come spring, and the fact that we're getting more water all the time, okay? That doesn't seem to be being addressed, as you can tell. Like I said, pictures don't lie. The neighborhood really doesn't want this to go through. It's bad enough with single-family homes, and I might add, Lloyd Companies seems to be doing everything that they can. I agree. They, you know, turned around and added something. But I think that should also tell you that obviously there's a problem, because would they be willing to do that if there wasn't a problem? Of course there's a problem.
We're a little beyond five minutes now, so. One question, you're, so you're not for it, is it just because of the drainage is basically why you're not for it?
Exactly.
Yeah.
The drainage is the problem.
Okay.
Single-family homes, at least you have something to absorb. And I know what they said about, they're going to make it so that it would be the same runoff as a single-family home. Judging by what I've seen in our area, if that's the standard that they've already tried for, they've failed badly. And that can be seen just by the water.
Okay. Any questions for Robert?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address this item? One thing, just make sure we have new testimony.
Understood. My name is David Watson. I live at 3108 North Galaxy Lane. I will first and foremost give Lloyd Companies credit, because when they came back with us in the neighborhood meeting and showed us six acres from one, I was very impressed. However, I would concur, though, that the, the priority of our drainage field to be fixed, or for them to come out and do whatever priority they do, I'm not going to play tit for tat. That's not my job. I would say we need to move that priority up. I would concur with all the rest of the neighbors that the amount of water that comes through, I don't think one thing is being assessed, is that we have developments to the north, the east, and the west within the last 12 months that have roughly taken about 260 acres, could be off maybe a few, and turned it from nothing, or fields, cornfields, or whatever, and we have multiple apartment buildings that went up on Marion, they're on the third apartment building now in under two years, on the, on the Marion going towards Walmart. Right next to it, you have one that looked like a couple hundred unit multifamily, and all those storm drains go down underneath, over to Cary, and then boom, right into that, that drainage field. Everything all the way around, for a good one-mile-square radius, all drains in there. And I don't think that's been looked at, because that's where this excess water is coming from. I'm sitting there looking at rainfall maps and trying to understand it and look at it a little harder, but I get out there and go walk around them fields, and now they're cutting a field through the cornfield from Marion to the, the university complex over there. They're cutting a road to that cornfield. They've already started. I'm sure it was approved. And then we have, as you head towards the freeway on Benson, that 100 acres, that way's all being developed now. They're starting to cut roads through that. They've got the great big signs up, you know, what we're putting here, what the zoning is. All that water's going somewhere, right into that ditch, right into our backyards. I think this, I think the Lloyd Companies are trying to do the best they can, I really do, but I think before they can go forward, I think the city's got to go forward, move at the priorities and do the study, figure out how we can go up there and clean up the mess. I know it needs a major, like dredging, you know, heavy dirt work, mucking, whatever terminology we would like to use, it's fine. But there's no way for the water to drain, and, you know, I did, the city did call me and said they're going to come out and take a look at some things, and that was great. I appreciate that. The main thing is, though, is that nobody's addressing all these trees that are hanging over this, this ditch, that are actually growing through the ditch, and the fences that are going across this ditch on the other side of Maple, where, like, little makeshift beaver dams have been built from debris washing down, as water does. On the corner of Marion and Maple, that guy's backyard is now in water again. His back corner of his property is underwater. He's got his fence all blocked up now with cinder blocks, because the water is now rotting his posts, and his fence is starting to fall back. Okay, well, I'm sure it was a properly permitted fence, so I just, I respectfully disagree with the assessment that the water is running properly and that the drain is proper, and that everything is going through, it's fine. I mean, I did contact FEMA as well. I had a very similar conversation with them. They were concerned, and they said they're going to contact the city, and I left it at that. Like I said, we need to address the water, as I stated before, but, you know, I don't have a problem with Lloyd Companies' proposed development. As stated, I think that the conservation is great, the little triangle in the corner helps out a lot, because that's a real low point. After three inches of rain, that part was underwater, so that probably saved them some hassle later trying to put a house there. But that's all I really got. I'd be more willing to take any questions. I think we've all seen enough photographs to, to kind of, we, we've done that to death, so I'll leave my phone in my pocket.
Thank you. Any questions for Dave? Thanks, Dave.
Stay well.
I think we'd probably bring up one of the engineers or city to maybe address a couple of those items, maybe to help the neighbors a little bit.
Well, and Mr. Chair, if I may comment, but Andy, before you speak, it, it doesn't seem like, and we appreciate all you guys coming out tonight and expressing your concerns and opinions, that the development isn't necessarily the issue in, from what I seem to be hearing from the neighbors, it's really more the city's management and maintenance of the drainage. And so maybe you could just kind of reiterate, Andy, and I know you've already stated it for the most part, but kind of what your plan is as this development progresses as well, what you all do to make sure it's reviewed and looked at prior to approval.
Sure. Our engineering staff has a principal drainage engineer and staff that review all these plans. They also commission studies that analyze these watersheds. I cannot speak specifically to the last study on this area. I'll have to look that up. But we analyze these areas all throughout town to make sure they are meeting design standards. If, and we find areas in town that are not, and we, we commission projects to complete those and bring those up to standards. You know, if we identify that there's a need in this area, certainly we're going to take care of that. I see the pictures, I've seen the pictures in the past, too. I agree, there's a lot of water there. There's a lot of water. There's a lot of water in a lot of our drainage ways when we get heavier rain events. The, the March pictures obviously was on frozen ground. We're all familiar with that one. The 2.7 inches over the three-day period in September, you know, everything is, every storm is unique. Every storm, it's very much heavier in one spot than another. And as one of the gentlemen said, the hydrology does feel like it's changing. We, as the public works and the engineering group, we are looking at that. You know, we have, there's new information out that did a rean, reanalysis of the hydrology and should we be using the same depths of rain for our 100-year analysis? And what we have now still fits in that new analysis. So we feel that our standards are still meeting the standards for this area. But, you know, I'm, in the testimony I'm hearing, certainly we're going to take a harder look at this area to see if there is something that might be blocking it up that we're not seeing. Not aware of anything at this point, but I'll, I take these comments seriously and we'll, we'll address anything we do find out in that area. And as I said before, we prioritize our winter work, our channel cleaning each year based on what we see. So it can change one year to the next which one we're going to go into first based on threat to public safety, private property, and conveyance capacity, those type of issues, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item with new testimony?
Good evening. My name is Stephen Sidig, 3401 North Orion Drive. I was here at your previous meeting. I attended the, the meeting with the developer and it was, it was kind of helpful, but there was some, actually brought up more questions for me. We were given a map. Can you bring up this? My home is actually right here. Now, previously I pulled up the FEMA flood map just a week prior, before all this was kind of plotted out and stuff. And I did not have a little red box around my lot. I do now. One of the pictures that showed that five-foot of water in that channel was behind my house. My biggest concern is if you look at these lots coming off the road that are going to, if, what we're, we're told at the county or committee, uh, community meeting is the drainage for those lots as they go in, past that pile of dirt are going to slope to the east to that the drainage would go to the retention pond farther east and then probably north. If you look at some of these pictures, this is standing where there's actually a wooden lathe, which I am assuming is like the lot line of, of these properties. And if you look at this picture, this is, there's the dirt pile, but I'm standing right at the very base of that. And behind that is relatively flat. If they're going to build for those four lots to make it high enough to get the drainage going east and north, they're going to have to berm that up pretty good. My concern is that if you take that, it's going to push all that water even farther to the west, closer to 34th Street. And then where the, the red boxes end, they could actually get more water towards 34th. The other issue I had was, I was confused. We're looking at moderate density. Could I get the definition of that from someone? What that means? All right. Because when I started doing some research, the plans for the apartment showed two units, four stories high. And if you look at your forms for residential moderate density, it's three levels, no more than 48 units. So I was kind of concerned as how you could get a four, two-four level apartments in a medium-density area. Any questions for me?
No, I think Jason will address those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. The applicant here, as you look at this rezoning exhibit, they do have the RA2 section in the middle and that does only allow a maximum of three stories and 48 units per building. And then they have kind of that L-shaped piece adjacent to Career Avenue that they're proposing as RA3. That would be an area that they could then build four stories and over 48 units. So they'd just be able to be in that little L-shaped area.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this item with new testimony?
Good evening. My name is David Christensen. I reside at 5,000 West 35th Street North, across the street from the proposed, proposed project area. I have three comments. Number one is that we heard today that plan for how to handle the water there has not been recently reviewed. I think it's premature to approve something till that plan is reviewed. Secondly, the 300-foot line from the project area to where people were no longer notified, I think is pretty arbitrary where you have a moving target like all of this water to the south of us, all the way to Maple Avenue and beyond. There are many houses, many neighbors who have received no notification of this. I, living just across the street from the, the 300-foot boundary would not have known about this were not for the courtesy and communication with my neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for David? Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else like to address this item with new, new testimony?
Josh Ketchum with Norman Engineering. Just wanted to talk through the current plan and some of the comments that have come up related to drainage and our development. If I could ask the council to show Sheet 7 again that showed the overall plan. So as we've talked right now, currently we're proposing the two conservation areas and what those areas represent are the areas that are inundated by the 100-year flood as part of our proposed development. We will not be affecting those areas with our grading whatsoever. They will stay as they remain. So any 100-year flood that inundates our site will have the capacity to inundate those existing areas as it does today. That boundary is based on the most current available FEMA information. We've established our 100-year flood elevation on site. That's what's shown with the blue line there. And so as part of our development, we're going to convey the proposed areas that are zone residential and office to our detention pond, which will be on the southern portion of the north conservation area. As we work through our proposed design, we will be looking at what that pond needs to be sized for and what the release rates will be required based on city at single-family rates. And we will be constructing an outlet structure that will control that release rate so that additional water isn't discharged downstream at any rates that exceed what the design standards require. So what our current layout is trying to accomplish is A, allow the existing floodplain to inundate as it does today with no impacts to the adjacent residents. And B, make sure that our proposed development does not contribute any additional flows to the downstream condition that would further impact residents. So. Any questions?
Thanks, Josh. Any questions for Josh? So what you're saying is basically it's going to flow into this pond and then it'll slowly come out. You guys have it where it's engineered where slowly come out and be released.
Correct.
So it's not all coming out at once, is basically.
We will downsize the, the outlet structure will have a smaller orifice on it that will control the release rate to the rates that are required by city standards, single-family rates. So we will do our analysis based on the size of development, time of concentrations. Do our, do our due diligence as engineers to determine what those flows are required to be and then make sure that what we're routing to that pond is controlled to the release rates that we're bound by. So, yeah, it's, that's the, that's the process and that's how we'll end up with it. So currently, you know, we're, we're in the preliminary phase, so we haven't gone through and done a final design. But we've accommodated a space and a size that we anticipate will be adequate for that pond and we have the ability to expand that once we move forward through the design process. So that's, that's, that's where we're at right now. And I just wanted to kind of talk on behalf of a couple of those things since they've come up in some comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to address this item? If not, we will close public testimony and I'll look for commission action.
Make a motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
So you have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I, again, appreciate everybody coming out and expressing their concerns and it certainly seems like the concerns are more based on city management and ma, maintenance of this drainage. And it looks like the city is really doing everything in their power to address those concerns. And I would encourage any of you to continue to have those conversations with the city. And, you know, the development, in my opinion, looks like it's doing everything in their power and will get those drainage approvals that are necessary as this development progresses. So in my opinion, I'm in favor of this agenda item.
Mr. Chair, as I hear the civil engineer talk about this, I've worked with enough of them over the years that I know they're going to go at this problem and really make sure that they meet all of those codes and standards and go above and beyond. That's the way we've done it for years and years. To comment about the adjustment in the use, which is really kind of the primary element that this body really has to be concerned with, I think this layout looks actually pretty good. Having RA2 near RA2 feels like it's a, a good non-transition, you know, like things near each other. Having the RD1 adjacent to the villa-style homes is really a nice transition into the neighborhood. I think overall this fits into this corner pretty nicely. And the fact that they went from one acre of kind of that resource land to six, I think speaks well of the developer trying to really address every bit of the problem that they can and go above and beyond kind of the, the minimum standard and try and do something that's really right for the community.
Any more?
Be voting in favor of this too for the reason that it does reflect the most current planning and requirements in association with what the intended development will be.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. Denise, can you read the next item?
Item five, aye, is petition 10972, 2019, preliminary subdivision plan for grasslands development located at the northwest corner of West 34th Street North and North Career Avenue.
Albert Schmidt, City of Sioux Falls, Planning and Development Services Department. So this is directly related to the previous one. This is the preliminary subdivision plan for that same rezoning area. So a little more detail just for your knowledge on here. The plan that's in front of you this month instead of last month, yes, got altered quite a bit, especially in the floodplain area. And so you can see the area that they're in there and I'll just repeat some information that the plan, according as it sits right now, not looking to add any fill in the regulatory floodplain at this time. That blue line is the approximate location of that regulatory floodplain line according to the best survey data that we have available. And so I will note that this line does look different than the large FEMA maps that you see on the line, online. And that should be noted that when you do a FEMA map, it's not as specific site direct. It's about a plus or minus of 50 feet based on the scales that we have in there for where those approximate floodplain boundaries are. And so it's not the perfect thing to base everything off of when you're going for design. So we make the engineers actually go, all right, look at the FIS, the flood insurance study. Look at how this area changes over the course of the length of the project and the channel that you're on and show us then how the elevation changes as you go along the project area. And that's where you get this. That's why we require a licensed land surveyor and engineer to actually sign off plans, provide us plans and go off that route. We have reached out to FEMA. I have not heard back from my contacts there on just this process, double-check. We had some really good concerns and comments from the neighborhood. We want to make sure that we're trying to follow up the best we can. The main issue that we have, and I don't, again, I don't disagree that, you know, as things are going on, things may be changing. The problem is, is I have a, a minimum standard that I have to hold people to and I can't go really above and beyond that. And our minimum standard is the regulated floodplain, which is the 1% annual chance or commonly referred to as the 100-year event. So as much as I'd love to do more in that requirement, I have to get to that level and build to that level. And so when you look at some of the pictures on the adjacent properties, it did look like that water during those events came right up to those backyards. When you look at the maps, looks like you would expect it to come right up to those backyards based on the fill that was placed there previously. This floodplain has been FEMA-recognized floodplain since 1979. It's had a floodway since 2009. So just a couple of terminologies, just in case you're out there wondering what that means. Floodplain is during a flood event where you have slow-moving waters. And floodway during a flood event is where you have the fast-moving waters. So you'd expect, expect things in those areas to wash out more easily. So we really try to protect those areas a lot more. But we do in the city have more stringent requirements than the bare minimum in our no-rise for even floodplain. So some communities out there that take just your standard template language that the federal government makes you have at the minimum, you can actually fill in floodplain. You can fill it in until it causes a .01-foot rise in adjacent properties. We said, no, that's not good enough. We want 0.0, 0.0. Done. Don't cause, don't push water off of other people. Deal with the water you have on your property that you bought. So that's what you see here, the issue you run into. And it's very good points out there is once you get above the 100-year event, I don't have any control over where that goes. All of our standards point to that, so the water is going to get out there. If you have a larger than we regulate the minimum standard. But all I can do is hold developers and property owners in the city accountable to our minimum standard. If they want to go above and beyond, it's definitely an option for them. But that's the minimum standard that everybody else is held to. And it's, it's, it's tough to design when you get to like the next level, what they look at, which is 500-year. That's, that's a pretty stringent design standard, so. Just so you know where they're looking at, kind of having that retention pond in the plans. They're showing that size approximately right there. And you can see, we make them have that outside the regulated floodplain as per the drainage standards. And that would overtop them and go into the floodplain if it was an event larger than a 100-year event. So this kind of shows you the rough water ways that's coming through there. Most of this water is mainly designed for that apartment complex in there. Then again, the proposed zoning, and you can, you'll notice that the area with, touches floodplain, they've done a great job of putting that as CN to really hold that in place so that there's no changes to the regulated floodplain areas that any storage capacity that's there today should be maintained and continued on. And then they have their new proposals there for the apartments on the northeast and then the twin-home, single-families on the south with the existing office on there. So with that, because the location and the proposed uses match the spirit and intent of the Sioux Falls Conference of Plan and, and there's only technical sire tasks remaining that can easily be changed and updated and modified in there, we're recommending approval for this PSP or preliminary subdivision plan.
Thanks, Albert.
Thank you.
Any questions for Albert? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Mike Crane, Lloyd Companies, 2212 East 54th. I don't have much to add. We're, I think we've talked a great deal about what we're trying to do there. The, we really are, by virtue of the changes in adding the conservation areas, we are trying to be as, accommodate this as best we can. And the, the engineering will go forward to ma, make sure that we're, we're meeting the city's standards. So again, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. We're just.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike. Anyone in the audience like to address this item? State your name and address for the record.
David Watson again, 3108 North Galaxy Lane. So we got this map up here and the map up here talks about where the water's going to flow and how it's going to flow. Okay? So if we go down the bottom of the map, 34, 34th Street, that is a, a slope to the west. That street slopes right down and it runs right into the floodplain. I don't understand how much fill or whatnot you're going to change. It's going to take all those single-family twin-homes. single-family twin homes and all that stuff and push it back towards their fill pond. I mean, their storm pond. That's not going to work. Even the topographic lines on that map, and I'm a military guy, so I know a little bit about maps, the lots on the west side of the map, where you got the hill up there towards the mid, the middle of that split Pentagon, all that water is going that way, except for the stuff at the mid of the, at the top of the Pentagon, which is going to fall onto the street. And depending the way the final slope comes, we'll either come right back to the corner of 34th and Vincent, and go into the storm area. Well, you look at everything on 34th, all those twin homes, all that's coming right to the street. And all the, all the stuff on the other side of 34th Street that is already being started, constructed, is already draining into 34th Street. So 34th Street turns into a river when it rains, with a half an inch to an inch of water flowing straight down it, right over the edge, and right into the storm, right into the floodplain. So I, I think, you know, the, the map looks good, but in actuality, what's there, it's, it's not realistic. There's no way, I mean, I'm not even talking about the apartment buildings. Excluding those, because I know they're going to have culverts around it, they're going to cage all the water and pull all the water to a point. But all the single-family and all the twin homes, no, all that stuff's going right to the roads. Roads are going to drain into 34th, because it's already a slope like this, right down to the floodway. And everything across the street on 34th is already pitched that way, and already been have all the, all the infrastructures in place. Everything is pitched towards the road. Everything on the north side of 34th, the proposed additions are pitched towards the road, and all the infrastructure is there. So I'd never seen the city ever approve a property that pitches away from the road. And no, the setback and everything from the setback has to pitch towards the road or towards the drainage line. So that, it doesn't make sense, as put it. The only thing, other thing I'd like to add is that, as stated by the city, is that the maps were done in 79 and '09. And the weather and the climate and the rainfalls have changed in South Dakota exponentially since then. 79 and '09, that's the best data we got? I really think we need an updated study, at least to give people peace of mind. Because my insurance company told me, if this shifts that floodplain, or if they come out and they do a new study, my insurance is going up $2,250 a year on my property for flood insurance. That scares the hell out of my wife. Unhappy wife, unhappy life. So that's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, first of all, thank you for your service. I'm a military gal as well, but I certainly do not understand all of this. So I just thought, maybe we should either bring the engineer back up, or Andy back up, and maybe help answer some of your concerns or questions, if that's, if that's something that could be helpful at this time. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Josh Ketchum, Norman Engineering. So this map currently shows our preliminary plan for drainage on this development, based off of what you're looking at here for contours are the existing contours. There will be some significant grading that will be, have to be performed onsite to accommodate some of the drainage arrows that we're showing. So that's our general plan right now. And based on the existing contours, from the southeast corner to the northwest corner, there is approximately 1479 down to a 1454. So we've got significant fall towards the proposed detention pond location. So from a preliminary grading standpoint, we anticipate we won't have difficulties routing some of that drainage to where we're showing the proposed detention pond currently. To accommodate some of that, we will be incorporating proposed storm sewer system on 35th Street, Grasslands Avenue. And as we develop those plans, you know, that, those are some of the things that we'll have to obviously incorporate into our plan to make sure that that drainage gets there. But there is a large hill that, where North Vincent Avenue, that text is sitting there, that we'll have to be carving out. We're going to have front yard drainage draining towards our proposed streets, which will be conveyed, or which will drain down those streets, and down to that proposed detention pond location. So big picture plan, the arrows that are shown on here represent what our future contours will look like. But at this level, in the process, we're not developing a final grading plan. We're, we've, we've analyzed the site based on the existing grades and determined that this is how we're generally anticipating the site to function in the future. And so, you know, we will, we will again, add further detail as we progress through the process. But we do not anticipate, based on what we see, that that should be an issue to get the water to where that pond is showing currently. So there are any questions relating to my explanation of our proposed grading there?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
As you talk about that detention pond area, I assume that as you go into further design, and you start to look at capacities, things like that, and it turns out that maybe that's inadequate? Are there other, maybe underground or other types of structures that you can do to make sure that whatever is put onsite is adequate for the need?
Sure. So when we get closer to final design, the plan is, is, you know, the, the capacity is a function of depth and area. And so that footprint right now is approximately 25,500 square feet. We anticipate two to three feet, you know, of depth in that pond is what we're looking at. So that, that'll accommodate a large volume of water. We anticipate we'll need approximately 50,000 cubic feet of storage in that pond, based on our current analysis of the site. So that footprint, if it, if, if we can get three feet or four feet of height on the pond, our storage volume obviously will go up, and we can, we can accommodate. So, but there are other measures that you can introduce underground storage systems do exist, that we can, we can provide additional capacity if needed. And there's also additional space to the north of the pond there, that we could utilize as well if we were short on storage. But we, we feel like we've provided plenty of space with that footprint that's showing, based on the site and our, and our current analysis. And we have some room to grow that as well. So as we move forward in our design process, if, if it needs to be larger, we do have avenues to, to do so. So...
So you're planning to exceed the standard to some degree, to make sure that you've got it covered, it sounds like?
Correct. Yeah. We will, we will meet the standard and, and make sure that our release rates are not exceeding, and that, that volume that is required will, will be at or above what, what we will need to make sure that that's possible. Correct? So...
Thank you.
Question, Andy. So basically between 35th Street and 34th Street, so the water looks like it's going north. Is that, because if you put houses in the front, isn't that going to go out to the road? Shouldn't that go to the road, instead of going back towards the other properties?
In those, in those lots, there will be some backyard drainage. So you'll have your front yard will pitch towards North 34, or West 34th Street. Backyard drainage will go towards that shared lot line. The, the lots on the, just to the south side of 35th will also be crowned. So their front yards will go towards 35th Street, and the rear yards will go towards a backyard drainage that may or may not include storm sewer, depending on what grades dictate. But that's generally our plan for how to, how to establish those lots in that area.
Okay. Perfect. Because I, I mean, I'm not an engineer, so that's why I'm asking that question, because it looked like you're going to run water into other properties, and that, so that makes more sense now. So...
Yeah, we'll have a crown in both, in those lots, that'll convey drainage away from the houses. The house will be at the, at the top of the lot. And then we'll have some, some drainage channels or storm sewer that's proposed in the shared lot line between. And then front yard drainage will get conveyed to the streets. So...
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions for Andy? Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this item? State your name and address for the record, please.
Charlotte Woods, 3400 North Galaxy Lane. I'm hearing all this, but it seems to me the thing that has not been addressed yet is the water that flows onto 34th Street goes down the street, because the street goes downhill, and that then flows into the floodplain. And right now, with every rainstorm, the dirt keeps washing away there. And I understand what the engineer is saying about these, the buildings that will be north of 34th, but there are still the townhomes that are being developed on the south side of that, which Dave stated, their yards will flow down to 34th. So I don't know if this is relevant to this conversation, but it seems like despite all the efforts to change the direction of the water, there's still going to be an issue with 34th. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to address this item? With new testimony?
On this issue?
Yep. Yep.
Steve Sidig, 3401 North Orion Drive. This map's really pretty helpful. This is what I was kind of trying to address, those four lots in the southwest corner, draining towards the curved road. If they're going to be grading up, and if you're looking, the blue line is the floodplain, they're going to, these lots are like right on that. So you're actually going to be pushing water west, is my concern. And I live west. So if they can have like the drainage that's going to go underground to the street, like they're talking with the townhomes, would be beneficial. But if any increase in grade on the east side of that flood, to push it west towards Galaxy Lane, 34th Street, could be an issue for the homes along that lawn. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this item? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Donna Keeler, 5,000 West 35th Street North. So right where the red, the, the four houses, that's 35th Street. And so we've already determined that the water in the back of those yards are going to run the opposite of that arrow. And so 35th Street North has a culvert. And already, rain exceeds the culvert capacity. It's a three hole or level culvert. So all of that now is going to converge right between, right behind all those homes off of Galaxy. So I'm, I'm really concerned about the flow that's already coming completely from way past Marion, that we're catching in that culvert, that's coming down. And now it's going to meet this new water. And I think the other thing that we're kind of missing is a 79 study and a 2008 or 2009 development map. But when were those apartments built? And when did that landscape change? Because I think that, you know, is the problem, is that it's no longer land, it's concrete. And, and that's what's shifting everything. So, you know, it's easy to approve, and maybe just a little more study would be beneficial. Thanks.
Any questions for Donna?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this item? If not, we'll close public testimony. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve five I.
Second.
So you have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I appreciated the last comment about this does need additional study. Can't agree more. That's exactly why we have city engineers, we have professional engineers on this project. I have confidence in our local engineers. They have a huge heart for this kind of thing. They will work hard to make sure they have capacity. That's why I really appreciated hearing the civil engineer say that they have the potential capacity to have a double of their current estimate of what the need is. So they do know that they have the capacity, and they can design it to work the way it's supposed to, and make sure that it protects all those other properties around. That's what we do in design every day. And it's great to hear that we have those kinds of experts on this team to be able to do those kind of studies. They're a lot more focused on this particular property, as opposed to a public study that often looks at a much wider range picture. So I'm in support of this. I think it makes a lot of sense. I can see that this grading plan, it's not currently showing the contours that are needed. He talked about the arrows really representing the intended direction of things. I have confidence that he can make this work. So I'm in support.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. Denise?
Item five B, petition 11004-2019 rezoned from the AG Agriculture District to the O Office District, located at 5201 South Cliff Avenue.
Evening. Again, owner applicant on this one is Robin Dykstra with Lincoln County Rural Water. This is approximately 1.1 acres of land at 5201 South Cliff Avenue, which is the northeast corner, or sorry, northwest corner of Cliff Avenue and East 61st Street, as you can see on the map here. This site currently has two large groundwater storage tanks, which you can see on the aerial photo, that haven't been used since, I believe, 2012. And a telecommunications tower, which is on the northeast corner of the property there, that was put up in 2015. And the applicant has communicated with adjacent property owners and talked to them about the proposal ahead of this meeting. So most of them should be aware of those items, as well as the signs and letters we send out. They're proposing to rezone this O Office from the Agriculture Zoning District, so they can put it up for sale, and have a prospective buyer purchase it, and either retrofit the buildings, or put something new onsite there. Should be known that any new structures would have to abide by our current zoning ordinance, which, just to make it simple, you have single families' homes around there on the west and to the east. Any office would be basically, height-wise, restricted to the same height restrictions as the houses that could be built or rebuilt in those locations. Excuse me. And any approval within the O Zoning District, if they come in for a building permit to put new building on that site, we do have what we call permitted special uses for this property. So an office with residential this close, there are specific things they would have to meet in order just to come in and obtain a building permit without coming back to this board, such as, they're going to have to have sloped roofs, they're going to have brick facade, and they're going to have to have parking in the rear. Again, if they can't meet that, or they have a different design that better uses the site, they can come forward to this board for a conditional use permit, have another public hearing to talk about their exact design and what they want to do. And this board can look at that, and then talk about how that affects neighbors, if it's positive or negative, and those kind of things. So because of the location in the corner of a local street and arterial roadway, any future access on this site will be limited to 61st Street only. So the Cliff Avenue access will go away. And the need to obtain a CUP, if the specific site conditions are not met, along with the conformance to the spirit of intent of the Sioux Falls Conference and Plan, and the applicant's communication with the surrounding properties. In addition, the minimum standards that CSU Falls has as part of the requirements for permitting. And then finally, because of the history of this neighborhood, for when commercial, but more realistically, it was office, was developed around here, and what was commented on back in those times, we actually recommend approval with one condition, to make sure it's following the intent and the history of the area, that we limit this, and we do not allow RE1 limited retail employment form to be allowed at this site. So that's our recommendation.
Thanks, Albert. Any questions for Albert? Is the petitioner here? Come up and state your name and address, maybe give us a little information about your project.
My name is Robin Dykstra. I work for Lincoln County Rural Water. My address is out of town, so maybe it'd be more preferable. I'm representing 5201 South Cliff Avenue. What we're looking to do, as Albert had told you, we do have not used this site since 2012. It really serves no purpose for us anymore, as our water distribution system's not even connected to it anymore. We decided at a board meeting a while back that we would put it up for sale, but first need to get it rezoned. And this is the first step for doing that. We understand there have been issues with this neighborhood for retail, and that is why we're not even looking at retail for this. We're just looking to do office. I did send letters out to the neighbors, to the closest neighbors who I sent it out to. And in that letter, I told them I'd like to talk to them, communicate any concerns or any issues that they may have. I've spoken with a few of the closest ones. In fact, the closest one right behind the property is Randy Cooper. He is here tonight. the closest one right behind the property is Randy Cooper. He is here tonight, and he does have some concerns about things, and I'll let him speak for that. But again, that's, retail is his biggest concern with that property. I don't know really what to say right now. It is not listed for sale, per se, as the first step needs to be to rezon it.
Okay. And you're okay with that condition?
We are.
Okay. Any questions for Robin?
No.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address this item? State your name and address for the record.
My name's Randy Cooper. I live at 1108 E 61st. As you can see, my backyard runs 187 feet along the west side of the towers there. So, I'm not against rezoning, just want to, I guess, be assured that it will comply with what is in the neighborhood. In other words, single-story office buildings, not, say, two-story buildings, or no retail, which I was told that's what it would be. I guess those are my concerns. If it's approved, as long as it's approved that it's office, strictly office, and they comply, I don't have a two- or three-story business in my backyard. I guess that, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy?
Mr. Chair, so Randy, based on what Albert described, and, so based on what Albert described, as well as the condition of not having an RE1 form on that site, were you, are you happy with this? No?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite understand you. My hearing's very bad. I'm sorry. If you can yell at me, that's fine.
I'm a good yeller. You want me to step in?
Sure, you're a good yeller. It's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
What she was asking is if you're okay with the RE1 use being...
Not being allowed.
Not being allowed.
Pardon me?
Meaning, maybe explain what that is. You just don't...
Not allowed rezoning.
Not...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And then, I would think that all the businesses in that area, Scott Gilbert, the dentist office, they're all single-story. They have a residential look to them. So the back of them looks, you know, they, they look nice. So I just, you know, just, I'm just concerned that, you know, you get a two- or three-story building, well, that, those are my concerns. They just stays compliant with what's there, that it's not allowed to go any bigger. Because there are no two-story buildings on, in that area.
Okay.
Those are awful quiet tenants back there, too. So I have no complaints.
We'll have Albert address the office district, or office zoning for you. What could be built there?
So, yeah, as we proposed right now, the retail concern would be addressed adequately, we feel. The height one would not be addressed. Right now, by default, the RRS and the BCF1, sorry, the DD2 form, which is the house around this area, or the BCF1 form, which would be an office, both are allowed to go two-story by default, 35 feet height maximum. So, right now, as it's shown in there or proposed to you, you could do a two-story. That could be amended here if you felt necessary to recommend that. But right now, just like if the house were to come down next door, we would allow a two-story house to go up in the neighborhood. We'd also allow a two-story office. And the offices to the north, I don't believe, have those restrictions. So, those could be converted or rebuilt, and those could have second floors as well on those ones.
And you also had a question about the design of it?
So, yeah, the design speaks specifically to the CUP comments we made, where if they don't want to meet those criteria, sloped roof, brick facade, parking in the rear, which are typically the things that you're going to see to make it look more residential, and kind of make it fit into that neighborhood a little better. Then they have to come back to this public hearing, and being the next-door neighbor, he will get a letter from us, and he'll have an opportunity to come, and they can explain to him how, what they're proposing is better for his property, or how it will be overall better. We would encourage, especially having communication here tonight, any proposal that, they'd talk directly to him right away, before even coming to that meeting. But until I have a proposal in front of us, I can't speak as to what that could be. But by default, to just come in and obtain a building permit and not talk to anybody, they'd have to have those residential kind of style features on the property.
Randy, does that address your concerns?
Well, I just, I think there's a difference between a two-story house and a two-story office building. If I had my choice, then I would have a two-story house. That'd be my choice to be put there. But a two-story office building in your backyard is going to look a lot different than a two-story office building. Parking in the rear, which I was told the parking was going to be on the north end, where there's a Verizon Tower, now it sounds like the rear would be the west side, which would be my backyard. So I'm not sure if they're talking the rear of the property being north or west. But I'm, again, I'm not against the rezoning of it and having something put there, but I just think a two-story office building, I don't know, I guess if you can imagine in your backyard, looking at it from your deck, and then that's what it would be. But a two-story home and a two-story office building is not the same thing. So there are no two office, commercial businesses in that neighborhood. They're all single-story. You, I don't know how far you have to go to find one. So, I'm not against the office building, but a two-story office building, I mean, I don't know. I guess picture it, when you get home and sit on your deck, see what a two-office, two-story office building would look like. I don't mind an office building, but I think it should comply with the Scott Gilberts or whatever's across the street, right across the street, which are all single-story. That's all.
Thanks. Thank you.
I have, Mr. Chair, I have an additional question. Are you aware that the access to the building will be switched around to 61st Street there? And that access will be, I mean, relatively close to your access off of 61st? Do you have any concerns about that?
Yeah. All the other, you know, all the other office buildings have access off of Cliff Avenue. For some reason, this one, they're saying cannot be. So, there's an approach on 61st Street, which is, you know, real close to my driveway. So that's going to be the, it sounds like the only way in and out, that they won't allow access from Cliff Avenue. Although, literally, all the other businesses have access from Cliff. I don't think I'm so much against the access there, as much as I would be a two-story office building. So, but, yeah, I was actually told that they were not going to allow any access off Cliff Avenue, for whatever reason. And I don't, I don't know that I'm, you know, against that access, as much as hopefully no two-story building back there. I don't mind a one-story office building with, or, you know, multiple, there'll probably be more than one. But it's just not something anybody would want. I'd rather, actually prefer looking at the water towers than an office building. That's just my concern.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item? If not, we'll close public testimony and look for commission action.
Move for approval on item 5B.
With the condition?
With the conditions as stated, exactly.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I can appreciate the comment about one-story versus two-story. The challenge that I think we have as a planning commission, thinking about what's allowed, I think Albert said it well. You know, if, if his own house were to be destroyed, and heaven forbid a tornado or something, it could be rebuilt as a two-story. And so I can appreciate the, the desire to do that. I think that for an O Office area, we want to give that developer the option to do what seems to work the best for the community, seems to work the best for the property. I guess I have a confidence that, that will likely be a one-story, but if it needs to be a two-story, then that's what's appropriate for that property. And, you know, it's always a challenge to, you know, we want to hear from neighbors, we want to hear that input. But for neighbors to have an absolute kind of power over their neighbor's property is not always appropriate either. We have to always, at this body, in my opinion, still balance kind of property owner rights and neighbor rights. We need to hear those, we need to be sensitive to those, but still make the right decision for what's appropriate zoning-wise. This is adjacent to a bunch of other O properties that could be two-story as well. Those could be rebuilt to two-story later on. So it seems to me that it's appropriate to leave it as is and as stated, with the one condition to limit the RE1.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. Denise?
Item 5C is petition 11044-2019 rezoned from the AG Agriculture District to the REC Recreation and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar located at the southeast and southwest corners of Arrowhead Parkway and South Riverview Avenue.
Commission, so I'm going to start off with saying this map probably looks a little goofy to you. We're actually looking at only rezoning a total of 33 acres, and my guess is most of the discussion tonight will be on six of those 33 acres. The, the reason why it looks so goofy is this is kind of in conjunction with an annexation that we did last month that became effective last week. And so, we tried to be as inclusive as possible, while still sticking pretty close to our normal operating procedures for notification. So we made the decision that while we annexed a bunch of it, if it wouldn't have been zoned right, we would have rezoned all of it. But a vast majority of it was going to come in appropriately zoned. So we wanted to make sure we reached out to every, at least everybody who got a letter from us about annexation. So that's why you see the large area that you see here. And then you'll see when I go to my next slide, how little area we're actually rezoning. So, just a side note for you there. As I said here, it's approximately 33 acres between the two areas. The owner applicants is two owners and two applicants, Seacue Falls and Brian and Pamela Hedman. Seacue Falls is the area to the, on the west side of the road, and the Hedmans are the one on the right, the C2 zoning. So the general location here is the southwest and southeast corners of East Arrowhead Parkway and South Riverview Avenue. Most people may know this probably as Highway 42, because before it was annexed, it would have been referred to more as Highway 42, Highway 11. Now, this detail here, this location would likely be a future neighborhood employment center based on the roadway system. And that REC area is currently owned by the city and currently state land, but it's farmed. It was gifted for park use, and we're trying to keep and respect those gifts. And so the plan is still for future park use, but there's no timeline for that park use or any development in there at this point in time. But we felt like it was important to get that brought over to REC, to kind of signify to the neighborhood that we still intend to use this for REC, and to make sure it kind of gets, can help or controlled or held in for that use a little bit better. Now, the C2 area on the southeast corner is planned for privately-owned wedding barn. The property still needs to be replanted to allow for a building permit to be issued. Right now, that six acres was just what we call a minor plat for transfer. And the right-of-way easement during that process was done, so that they have the full 50 feet of right-of-way allocated, either in dedicated right-of-way or in easement form on that property already. And so if that's in place, to give the correct amount of right-of-way for that side of the road, the city eventually will have to give the other side for the other part of the street, once improvement comes that way. An open house meeting was very productive, and it was held on Monday night, this past Monday, September 30th. We had around, I didn't count exactly, I think 30 or so attendees on that one. It was a well-attended meeting, good meeting. A lot of really good concerns were raised at that meeting, generally speaking, included traffic going through the residential neighborhood, kind of going south and then going on the 41st Street to get into town to kind of avoid taking Arrowhead Parkway back in, turning dangers at Arrowhead Parkway, sound issues that could result from an event being held there, and land use transitions for this kind of land use going here, and then the adjacent property in that area. So we had, we're still planning on having continuing discussion of those concerns, and we expect that to continue until the final vote with the city council, assuming that this gets recommended for approval or denial, and the city council sets their first reading and does a second reading. But because of the location of this spot, I'll give you some more details here real quick on the wedding barn, too. You can see they're putting, trying to set that back on that property in the furthest kind of south half of that, to stay away from Arrowhead Parkway as much as possible. Hard to read on the screen, but they're also going to be made to do a rural section paved road from their driveway up to Arrowhead Parkway. So there's continuous paved area for traffic to go and to and from the events. And you can see the renderings right now on the right-hand side. I'll give you a few more renderings here on the concept for the barn, to kind of show you the general look of that with the patio on the backside facing the river. But because of the location at the corner of two arterial roadways, both Arrowhead Parkway and Riverview are considered arterial roadways in our major street plan system. The access to city utilities is there, sewer is directly there, city water will be brought in with the Arrowhead Parkway project. So, the planned reconstruction of the Arrowhead Parkway project as well, the conformance with the spirit and intent of the Seacue Falls Comprehensive Plan, and also the applicant's communication with the surrounding neighbors, sending out letters, holding an open house, which is not required, but strongly suggested. They sent out additional letters beyond what we even sent out, to try to match what at least would have been given to county residents, and those kind of, when you, if you would go through the county process. And then, the minimum standards that we have in place to be required to actually obtain a building permit, we recommend approval of the rezoning based on those standards and features. We feel that the issues at hand can be mitigated through, as much as we can control, through working with the applicants, and trying to help them do the right things to help guide people to where they need to go, and try to provide those additional buffers that really aren't required because of the surrounding land uses existing today, but maybe could be put in place just to kind of help out with those properties. So, I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Albert? And are you the petitioner, or is the petitioner here?
I'm the petitioner on the REC, so if you have any questions on that side, I think it's going to be a really good park in the future. We're looking forward to it. No timeline. But Brian and Pamela are here for that.
All right. Well, come up then.
The petitioner.
You state your name and address for the record, please, and give us a little bit of information on...
Hedman, 26568, 484th Avenue, Brandon.
Do you want to pull that up a little bit, so we can hear you a little bit better?
Okay. My wife, Pamela, and I set out to build an event center on the east side of Sioux Falls. We looked for, looked at a lot of different areas, looked at a lot of different lots. We found this land, and we really liked it for a lot of different reasons. It is located close to the Sioux River, has a real nice view of the Sioux River. It's on Highway 42, so there's easy access to a main road. And then, most important to us is that there are really no close houses to this property. The closest house is, from what I can measure, is about 1,880 feet. And I've measured it several times by different computer programs. And it's about 1,880 feet in two different directions. A lot of the houses in the area are completely out of sight from the place where we want to build. If you stand on the site where we want to build, you can hardly see a house. It's hard to believe, but there's a couple roof peaks that you can see up on the hill. But for the most part, over, all the houses are out of view, or over the hill. There's a number of them in Iverson Crossing that are hidden by trees. And again, those houses are at least 1,880 feet. We wanted to get a spot where we could respect our neighbors, not have neighbors complaining. We, you know, sometimes, an event center like this, you know, we planned to keep it within the, the ordinance, city ordinances as far as noise. But again, we didn't want residents right next to it. And so we felt that by finding a place where we were at least 1,800 feet from the nearest house, we could really respect other people's rights as property owners. We want to, we want to respect other people. We don't want to have noise leaving our property, and then ending up causing problems with people in their own homes. up causing problems with people in their own homes. Same thing with lights. Again, you can barely see this property from any house. And any of the lighting that we have, we feel we can adequately keep it from bothering anybody. We did hold a public meeting, and the items that were brought up were the noise and the lights. And we've, we just feel that we can, we will listen to people if they have complaints, even after we open. We sure want to address them. We want to be a good neighbor. We want this thing to be positive for the east side of Sioux Falls. Another thing I guess I forgot to mention is, is one of the reasons why we got into this was because there's quite a need for these. There's really a demand. We had a son that got married this summer, and we had a hard time finding a place for, for him to get married. And from what I understand, all the wedding event centers are booked clear through next year. And so we just feel that it, there's a need, and, and really, there's no wedding centers on the east side, so we'd have ours over there on the east side. And so that's why we are doing this. A couple of the other concerns, one of them is, is that anybody leaving our property may go south on Riverview Avenue, and maybe like sneak back into town is what some of the people that showed up at the public he, or the neighborhood, neighborhood meeting were complaining or worried about. And we are willing to put up signs and do everything we can to get people not to turn left off of our property, but go back to Highway 42 and exit that way. We don't want people going south. We don't want to bother our neighbors. We don't want to increase the number of people going by their houses, and we're sure willing to work with them. And for those reasons, we request that you change the zoning to our, on our property to C2.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Any questions for Brian?
Mr. Chair, just one. Can you address hours of operation?
Pardon me?
What hours will you be closing?
We plan to, for the most part, most events happen from like four in the afternoon until 11:00 at night. But most of the outside stuff, if there is very much, will be probably inside by seven or eight o'clock. And so for the most part, we'll be inside. I guess the other thing I forgot to mention is, is this is gonna be a well-insulated building. It's R40 in the ceilings, R20 in the sides. We feel that, that, you know, we can keep a lot of the noise inside, and then along with that 1,880-foot buffer to the nearest neighbor, we just don't think we're gonna be bothering anybody.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address this item? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is April Kelling, and I live at 3101 South Riverview Avenue. My house, I have lived there for over 35 years, and I have used the intersection of South Riverview Avenue and Highway 42 for a long time. We have seen tremendous changes with the development of the east side. It is a stated fact that Highway 42 is at its capacity, and there is already a plan in place to extend and make it wider and safer to travel. However, that infrastructure is not going to be started until 2024. And what I'm here to tell you today is this intersection is a deadly intersection. My household travels it eight times a day. I have young children. I have neighbors that I've known my entire life and friends. And there is debris on this highway. There is accidents on this highway. There, I have had numerous, numerous near misses. This is a highly-traveled highway. There has been a casino that was built in the, I'm sorry, in Iowa, and obviously, the growth of the east side. I also have a concern with this petition. This petition needs to be separated into separate petitions. One, dealing with the city of Sioux Falls Park, and two, dealing with the C2 zoning. The infrastructure at the intersection of Highway 42 in Riverview is not capable to have safely, is safe for a C2 zone property. I can tell you that from years of experience of living here. I have pictures to show. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you the dangers of a left-hand turn. There is no lane for a left-hand turn for the only access to the C2 commercial property. I feel that there has not been due diligence in this petition and enough effort to research the dangers of this intersection before requesting this zoning. I'd like to show you the pictures of what it looks like. Not only... Not only is this highway clearly at its capacity, but it is, clearly have not been maintained. It's a very, very narrow highway where the buffers between the highway and the ditch are nothing but loose gravel, potholes, and just dangerous, dangerous conditions. Now, this is looking southbound, behind the stop sign and to the left in this picture, my left, would be, is the proposed location. So this is, this is what guests, or the more traffic from the C2 zoning is going to be turned into. Now, they did mention that the gravel road that you're looking at will be paved so, and widened, but that doesn't stop the fact that it's a left-hand turn off of a busy highway with high speeds, and there's no turning lane. This is what it, this is what it looks like looking to the east. So this would be what it would look like for a person coming from the east, westbound, and making a left-hand turn into the C2 zoning. Oh, as you can see, the bridge to the river, it bottlenose, Highway 42 bottlenoses from Highway 11 to go over the bridge. And as you can see right here, these guard li, guardrails for this bridge extend all the way to the part where the traffic flow is going to be stopped and backed up in order to make a left-hand turn because of no lane.
Okay. We're past five minutes. I'll give you 10 seconds if you want to wrap up quick.
Please take the time to construct this new development into a beautiful asset of the city and not make this a tragedy. I'm warning you, this intersection is deadly and dangerous, and please do not have a situation where we're gonna have similar fatalities that we just witnessed up in Moon Socket. And I'm here as 30 years of living in this area, and I'm warning you, this is a deadly intersection, and more study needs to be done before we can propose a C2 zoning in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this item with new testimony?
My name is Patty Peterson, and I reside at 9020 East 33rd Street.
Can you pull the mics down a little bit?
I sure can. I am located in the Arrowhead Park area, and I am directly behind, or directly across from the backside of the park on 33rd and River Bluff. On September 3rd, a vote was passed seven to zero by the Sioux Falls City Council in annexing in the Arrowhead Park and this parcel of land on Highway 42 and Riverview Road. At the time, the council voted Albert Schmidt from the city of Sioux Falls represented the city of Sioux Falls and for the Hedmans. Bonnie Duffy represented herself, stating why she did not wish for the annexation. In the end, with the vote, both the park and the parcel of land was annexed in. Unfortunately, not all the residents were aware of any of this taking place. Only those abutting the park received a letter outlining the plan for annexation. For most people, it was unknown. I don't believe that the common practice for the people living in the township is that they go to the city website to discover what will be discussed at the Sioux Falls City Council meetings. As a township, we are unable to vote on any happenings within Sioux Falls and Brandon, South Dakota. Elections, there were no signs posted along the park entrance and roads giving the township any notice the request for the annexation was taking place. Since the annexation passed, the notice has been posted along Highway 42 and Riverview Road that this meeting was taking place along with October 15th and the second reading for the city council of November 5th. The Hedmans did hold a neighborhood gathering at the Mary Jo Arbitorium on Monday, September 30th. It was slated to be an open house setting, but due to the large turnout, the Hedmans decided to change it to a sit-down gathering. People asked questions, also shared their concerns to the Hedmans, their partner in the venue, and with Albert Schmidt with the Sioux Falls, city of Sioux Falls. As far as my personal concerns, I'm worried about the increased traffic along East 26 leading into Arrowhead Park, the speed limit on East 26th Street, until you reach the curve to go into Highway 42 is 45 miles an hour. For those of us turning into Arrowhead Park entrance, which is our only entrance into our residential area, many of us have endured near rear-end happenings. We cannot take the turn at 45 miles an hour into our park entrance and where we live. And there is no turning lane to get off, to enter into our area. I myself have made a call to the city of Sioux Falls, Troy Miller, asking if there could be a sign erected warning drivers of turning vehicles ahead. I was informed that according to the records, there have been no fatalities at this turn. A sign of someone dying is there, but that was not due to an accident, but rather a medical issue. Death did occur. If you travel along Highway 42 heading west, there is a sign that is in place alerting drivers of traffic turning into Willow Run Golf Course. Also, a sign is placed, is in place if you are traveling east just past Veteran Parkway and East Arrowhead Road. Must someone be injured or death occur before a simple warning sign can be erected for us along East 26th Street? How many deaths have occurred where these other signs are placed? I do not see someone has died there, but they have the signs. The speed's increased to 55 miles an hour once you hit Highway 42 and you're heading both directions, east and west. I feel it's a safety issue for anyone who's unfamiliar with the area. We will have increased traffic leading from my area down to the folks at Riverview Road.
We're past time. If you want to wrap up, I'll give you 10 more seconds.
It should not, it should not be another concern for folks living in that area. It will be a challenge for the traveling, for those traveling the intersection. Albert did state that he will look into the signs. My concern, other concern is that all establishments that exist in the area, none of the roads lead into a residential area. They all exit from the establishment to Highway 42. This barn event has exits to Riverview Road into a residential neighborhood and a short distance to Highway 42. Heading south past the event center is a township road and a residential area. Not everyone will leave the event center and go to Highway 42. It is us, the township, that will see an increase in the traffic, and it is the expense of the people of the township that will incur the expense of the repairs or added, or add traffic to the gravel road. Always think about the snow removal setup also. The city of Sioux Falls will be responsible for snow removal from Highway 42 to the event center. The township will be responsible for Riverview Road to south of the event center into the residential area of Six Mile Road. I would like the city of Sioux Falls to consider making travel along our road safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else like to address this item? Just state your name and address for the record.
Tracy Muntz, 9300 East 41st Street. I'm gonna keep it super short, because most of my neighbors have already addressed this. My only request tonight is that we separate these two requests completely different. The REC honestly does make sense. It's already gifted to the city. It should be a part of the city. It should be rezoned from agricultural to REC. None of us are questioning that. But to bundle the two of these requests together, the C2 zoning is a completely different issue. And the Hedmans were very nice in addressing a lot of our questions, and I'd like to believe they're gonna, you know, deal with some of the things that were brought to be a good neighbor. But there, the Highway 42, I just encourage any of you to come and drive and try to turn left, either left off of Riverview onto Highway 42, or when I pick my son up from school in Brandon and I'm trying to turn left to get into Riverview, it's scary. And there's been times where I've seen the Merlin Roy trucks coming at me, and I've decided to floor it because I don't think they see me and are gonna stop. It's a very narrow highway with no turning lane, and the extra 300 people that are gonna be going in and out at night, potentially in the winter, you come across that bridge and you're gonna try to stop. It, something will happen. It will, I guarantee you. So that's all I'm asking, is separate them out, please.
Thank you. Any questions for Tracy? Thank you. Anyone else like to address this item? If not, we'll close public testimony and look for commission action.
Move to approve.
Second.
So the motion is second. Discussion?
I have a couple questions for Albert, if I could. The first one is, and I know you kind of briefly mentioned on it, but if you could hit on it again, why are, why are these two parcels lumped together in one application? And I think it's a little concerning to me that it's been done that way, and I think, quite frankly, I agree with the people who spoke on that item, and I think it's kind of muddied the waters a little bit. So could you maybe speak to that a little bit?
Sure. These were put together because as part of our development with this property and the annexation side of it, we bundled them together moving forward in that aspect, because we were planning on doing this kind of thing already this year anyways, not this early. But with the development opportunity here that was approached, was originally gonna go from the county aspect. We said, like, it makes much more sense for a development of this nature to go with urban services rather than county services when you're this close, especially when I was gonna annex the land there anyways, that we coupled them together and ran them together in that aspect. So that's really why they're coupled together, is because we were already gonna do that area, and then with the size of it there. And realistically, the REC side of things does not need to be rezoned immediately right now, today either. The C2 is the immediate request, so if you want to treat it as a C2, more than happy to come back on just a REC side, too. That's not a, not a big deal at all whatsoever on our planning office, staff side. That's not a, not a big deal at all whatsoever on our planning office, staff side.
No, and I, just for clarification, I think I'm ultimately okay with it, but I think it's kind of muddied the issue a little bit. So as just my opinion, I'd recommend separating those out in the future. My second question for you, Albert, is the property to the east. I know the C2 portion here does not buffer the Big Sioux River, but it's close and anything for me that touches the Big Sioux River, I get a little bit concerned about. Does the city own the parcel to the east of the applicant's property? Who, and maybe we don't know who does, but do you know, is it zoned rec or?
So the stuff to the east is still owned by the same owner that the Hedmans bought the six acres from, I believe Mr. Funky is the name on that one. I don't remember his first name off Tap Head, but it's still owned by the same owner who sold that. So he owns all the way across the river. It's actually a privately owned portion of the river right there. And so as far as I'm aware, with selling this land and going through that minor plat for, for transfer procedure, he more than likely was well aware of the intent of the Hedmans on this property and that side of things. Does that answer your question?
It, it's fine. Tough to put you on the spot. I assume it's probably zoned egg still, but I think we'll be fine. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Albert?
I have a question. Albert, could you talk about the traffic situation as it relates to the fact that the park would similarly create traffic and I assume use access similar to the event center?
Yeah, good question. I can speak to that. It's not my most knowledgeable area as far as traffic goes. We did invite traffic engineer Shannon Austin here so they could provide you a much better explanation than I could ever even dream to come up with. I'm going to make one quick comment. I don't mean to jump back. The other area is actually zoned PD right now, but for egg uses. So, but yes, traffic on this side, I'm going to let Shannon come up and speak to the traffic side of it. She can give you a much more detailed information, and she has a history in her mind which will boggle you. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Shannon Austin with Public Works Engineering. Can you possibly repeat the question, please?
Well, I'm wondering about the traffic situation with regards to the park having the same access as the event center would with Highway 42, but also on Riverview Road.
Yeah, so there would be no access from Highway 42 to the park property. All the access would be on Riverview Road, and it would be at the same location, 660 feet back, which are the regulations that the DOT and the city of Sioux Falls have both adopted for intersections that, or streets that intersect state highways. So currently, this is still under Department of Transportation jurisdiction, Highway 42 is. But Riverview then with it being recently annexed, of course, would be the city of Sioux Falls's. So there's, there's no concern from our standpoint to, we always try to line those driveways up to, to eliminate the confliction or the conflicting left turn movements. So, and much, much like on the north side of Highway 42, the paternal order police is almost pretty well wind up with Riverview Road. So that also allows for those left turners to be across from one another to eliminate those conflicts of, of left turns from the north as well as the south. If that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Shannon? Thank you.
Thank you.
We've closed public testimony. So I will look for commission action. Or we've got a motion in a second, so I'll look, all those in favor say aye. Unless you have, unless you have more discussion.
I wanted to make a comment if I may, Mr. Chair. I think when we look at C2, it's great to see the planning to be on two arterial roads. I mean, that's a primary element that we look for when we start to think about some traffic, things like that. I know Highway 42 is heavily traveled. I've been out there many, many times myself, and I think that the amount of traffic that this would generate, it probably is a blip on the radar of how much traffic is out there. We dealt with this in several other properties in the city, so I'm in support of this one.
Any other discussion?
I would certainly say that I agree with the, the neighbors' concern about Highway 42 and the speed and the pace that cars are traveling on Highway 42. I drive that stretch quite frequently, and quite frankly, I'd say that is very much so high speed and probably too high a speed there. And I think that's something that needs to be worked on, but I look at the arterial streets there, and this rezone is correct, and it certainly fits, fits the purpose of what should be going on that property there. So I will be voting in favor of it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, passes. Denise, next item.
Item 5D, petition 11065, 2019, conditional use permit for a full-service restaurant located at 5216 East Arrowhead Parkway.
Agenda item 5D is a conditional use permit to allow a full-service restaurant within 200 feet of a sensitive land use. The applicant is Paul Reynolds on behalf of Arrowhead Ridge 3 LLC, generally located at 5201 East Arrowhead Parkway. The applicant is proposing to build out an internal remodel for a full-service restaurant. No work on the outside will be conducted. As per the police department, an approved security management plan is required, and we have received that, and it has been approved by the police department. This is an existing arterial corridor with commercial uses, so the parking is on-site. And because the applicant has provided clarity to alleviate any potential land use conflicts, and the proposed development meets the merits of the city's comprehensive plan, staff recommend approval of the conditional use permit. And the applicant is here this evening. If you do have any questions for him, then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have as well.
Any questions for Adam? Thanks, Adam. Is the petitioner here? State your name and address and give us a little bit about the project.
Paul Reynolds with RCM Services, 4402 South Technology. The current location is on East Arrowhead Parkway. There was a, originally a restaurant in there that has vacated that space. There is a restaurant on the west side of town that is looking at expanding to the east side over there, and we have applied for a conditional use because they are looking at having restaurant services in there, and then they are going to have beer and wine sales in there as well. Questions?
Any questions for Paul? Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address this item? If not, I'll look for commission action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, passes. Denise?
Item 5E, petition 11073, 2019, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment located next to 453 West 69th Street.
The applicant is Kirby Mullenberg on behalf of Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company. As Denise indicated, it's a conditional use permit for an on-sale alcohol beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use. The location is at 453 West 69th Street. The sensitive land use adjacent to this site, there are existing, existing single-family homes that are approximately 400 feet to the southeast there, but they are buffered by an existing bank, a medical office, Minnesota Avenue, and West Devitt Drive. Police do require an approved security management plan. We did receive one, and it has been approved to move forward. The proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment meets the spirit and intent of the city's comprehensive plan. This is merely an expansion of an existing building that already mitigates potential land use issues amongst neighboring properties. Staff recommend approval of the conditional use permit as the applicant's proposal meets community standards outlined in the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicant is here to address any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Adam. Any questions for Adam? Thank you. Is the petitioner here? Come up and state your name and address and give us a little bit about your project.
Good evening. Kirby Mylenberg, 2800 South Jonathan Lane. We're just looking to do a small addition on the east side of the existing building. It's really that simple, just about 1,200 square feet to the, to the general public. There will be no different additional signage or any thing really changed on the exterior except for another 1,200 square feet.
Okay. Any questions for Kirby? Thank you. Anyone in the audience like to address this item? If not, I'll look for commission action.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve with conditions stated.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, passes. Denise?
Item 5F, petition 11067, 2019, alternative site plan for an alternative parking plan located at 1009 North Phillips Avenue.
Jason Bieber representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Paul Reynolds. It's located on North Phillips Avenue, kind of just west of Falls Park. The applicant is looking at constructing a roughly 6,400 square foot catering facility. The building will be used to make food and then shipped offsite to the location of an event. They will not hold events at this facility, and therefore customers will be, or limited customers will be coming to the facility. The site plan indicates the 6,400 square foot building, as I indicated. That building includes a garage, kitchen, storage, and office areas. As you can see, there isn't any event space located within it. The ordinance does require roughly 21 parking spaces at a 1 to 300 ratio. The applicant has indicated since there will be no event space and limited customers coming to the building, they feel that that is an enormous amount of parking lot. They are proposing roughly nine parking spaces that they feel will be adequate for their staff. And then, as you can see in the garage area, they'd have three parking spaces for their kind of catering trucks. The applicant has provided the necessary parking study elements. The plan indicates the reasoning behind the reduction, as I had indicated, that no customers do come to the facility, and nine parking spaces is enough for their proposed staff. Staff, because the application has provided the necessary parking plan criteria to warrant the reduction, and the amount of parking should be sufficient for the proposed building and use, staff does recommend approval of the alternative site plan. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Jason?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, if this is a change of use, then the parking will have to change as well, correct?
Yep. Great question. This, this was one of the reasons why we felt that this was the best route for the applicant, that it did give us a little bit of security if, for some reason, the catering business would fail, new business that went in there would have to provide that additional parking. So.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Let's state your name and address and give us a little bit about the project.
Paul Reynolds, RCM Services, 4402 South Technology. Facility right now is, or proposed facility is located on a barren piece of dirt that's on Phillips Avenue. The business that we are currently working with is strictly looking at this facility or this location to make their products that then are going to be delivered out to different venues that they are going to be working at on different points, different times of the year, different days. The facility, as you saw on the one drawing, we have three interior bays where they're going to have their vehicles parked. So their vehicles are not going to be parked outside. They're going to be parked inside the building. Then we did have nine parking stalls on the outside of the building for their staff. So when their staff are going to be there during the day, as they are getting meals and prepping the food and such that they have to do, they do have that opportunity for parking that is on-site. Besides that, minimal employees. They actually estimate most of the time, they're only going to have four, maybe five people are on-site, and then they will have a couple of other people come in when they do need to have their delivery services. Questions?
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to address this item? If not, I'll look for commission action.
Move to approve, agenda item 5F.
Second.
Any discuss, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Is that with the condition?
Mr. Chair, I think this alternative parking plan makes sense. They justified why it takes fewer spaces. It seems to be adequate for the use, and I think the neighborhood and the city is protected from if something changes here, so makes a lot of sense to me.
I have a question for staff. Is there additional conditions that were proposed for that, or is, is there no other conditions on this application?
What kind of conditions, I guess, would you be referring to?
I can't remember. Did we, were, we discuss any additional conditions or no? Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, passes. Denise?
Item 5G, petition 11080, 2019, alternative site plan for alternative buffer yard located at the southwest corner of North Lewis Avenue and East 50th Street North.
The applicant here is General Equipment, which actually has an existing business just to the south here. The applicant is proposing to sell and store heavy equipment on this lot. They are proposing to screen the property in an alternative way. The ordinance does require them to do a six-foot fence and berm, and the applicant does feel that that would prevent anyone driving on North Lewis Avenue from actually seeing the products that they are looking to sell. The proposed storage yard is required 25-foot front yard setbacks, and as I indicated, a six-foot high fence or a six-foot berm would be required to screen that equipment. The submitted landscape plan indicates a three-foot berm along North Lewis Avenue and a portion of East 50th Street. They also are, are placing significant trees and shrubs on top of this berm. Staff does feel that this should meet the intent of the screening requirements of the ordinance. As you can see kind of the area, this is an area of kind of some different uses, so staff felt that they should kind of concentrate most of the landscape and actually along Lewis Avenue and then the, the northwest part of the site. As you start going west, there's a lot of existing industrial businesses that currently have heavy equipment and gravel without screening. However, everything to the east of Lewis Avenue, as you can see, is kind of more of a big office and warehouse that does have paved parking and does have landscaping. So staff really felt like we wanted to do maybe a little bit more on Lewis Avenue to provide similar landscaping instead of just having kind of some heavy equipment just along there. And the applicant, as we feel, has done a good job of providing that screening in an alternative way and still making it their light usable for what they're actually proposing to do. So because the subject application, the screening plan meets the intent of the WM1 Forum, staff does recommend approval of this alternative site plan. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you. Is the applicant here? Come on, come up and state your name and address and give us a little bit of what you're doing.
Good afternoon. My name is Dino Dowchahayich, 2504 East 18th Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm the branch manager at General Equipment Supplies, and we've been a growing business. We can't seem to keep up, and we have equipment coming in that we don't have storage room for. So our landlord and lacy, Randy Thompson, gave us permission to develop that piece of property that he owns. We've been there 10 years. I felt like we've been a good business to the city. We're willing to do anything to meet complacency with your standards on this alternative site plan, and this would really give us a good opportunity to, to take on more equipment and to have more storage, not storage, but parking space for display of our new equipment that's for rental and sale as well.
Okay. Any questions for Dino? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address this item? If not, I'll look for commission action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, passes. Denise?
Item 5H, petition 10503, 2019, preliminary subdivision plan for Akerson addition. Preliminary subdivision plan for Ackerson Edition located south of East 85th Street and east of South Minnesota Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I will be recusing myself from this item also.
Thank you.
So the owner applicant on this one, the owner is H.A. Ackerson and the applicant is Steve Van Busker with MVP Properties Incorporated. Approximately the size of this whole area is about 38.89 acres. It's located, you can see, south of 85th Street and east of South Minnesota Avenue. Right now, it's listed as a subregional employment center based on the current major street plan, our current comprehensive plan. The applicant would like to revise their 2016 plan. I'll get there for you. So you can see on the left-hand side, it's the 2016 plan. The current one is on the right. With that revision, they no longer want to include the right-of-way for Veterans Parkway or SD 100 for that portion of the south portion of Veterans Parkway there. The applicant has been engaged on and off with South Dakota DOT for the past five years on right-of-way acquisition. South Dakota DOT has acquired right-of-way for the southern portion of this area, showing that they are trying to work on purchasing those right-of-ways. This section of Veterans Parkway has been planned since 1996 and with environmental documentation was approved around 2002. So this corridor also represents the next major transportation corridor for the commuter traffic, delivery traffic, emergency services in the area. The existing submittal has some minor items that should be addressed for water, street right-of-way, things like that. But the major issue at hand is the Veterans Parkway not being included in there. So because that portion of Veterans Parkway, which you can see here, this is the overall south sweep there for Veterans Parkway, because it's not included within that plan and it doesn't conform to the adopted major street plan and other, the other minor items in there that need to be addressed still, the impact of future emergency services in the area and the precedent that this could set on approval of these kind of plans, the staff recommends disapproval of this preliminary subdivision plan.
Any questions for Albert? Thanks, Albert. Is the applicant here? State your name and address for the record.
John Heber, Cutler Law Firm. Good evening to everyone, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear for everyone. I represent Ackerson Properties. Petitioner is Steve Van, Van Busker. And our mutual client is Ackerson Properties is the owner of the property southeast of 85th in Minnesota. The owner would like to develop its property southeast of that intersection. South Dakota 100, as designed and proposed, would go through the property. Taking away property would also eliminate the full access. And petitioner and owner has been in discussions with the DOT and the city for quite some time, for about five years now, diligently and actively for resolution. And unfortunately, no agreement has been reached. And owner and petitioner here submitted this preliminary subdivision plan for the city to take action, finally. That's simply what we're looking for is to take action. And in the meantime, while this has been pending and deferred at one point, dialogue has continued, discussions have continued in good faith. And unfortunately, again, no agreement has been reached. And today, we simply just ask for action to be taken on this, whether or not we can move forward with the preliminary subdivision plan without South Dakota 100. If South Dakota 100 is required to be part of the plan, then we simply seek action today, approval or disapproval. That's all. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address this item? If not, I'll look for commission action.
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Well, as I look at this, it looks pretty clear that it is an incomplete review. It doesn't conform in many locations. There's a lot of things that aren't provided. This is really fairly incomplete and it doesn't include the Highway 100. So I don't see how I can support this one.
Any more discussion?
I think we're all in that position.
Yeah.
It's not complete.
Okay. Well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Let's do that again. So all those, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye. I apologize.
All right. That one is disapproved. Next item.
Item 6 is the public input on non-agenda items.
At this time, we will allow anyone from the public to address the commission on non-agenda items. You're allowed up to five minutes. Please state, or come up to the podium and state your name and address. Seen everyone leaving? I will look for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, Sioux Falls.